Port Authority Meeting to Order. We have a quorum.
And I will call the City Council portion of this Council Port Authority Concurrent Meeting to Order.
And I guess we, do we need to do the roll call again, Carolyn? So Carolyn, you want to call the roll for the Port Authority? Bussi.
Present.
Carter.
Present.
Hunt.
Present.
Keller.
Present.
Luns. He just stepped out of the room for a minute. I'll be back. Peterson. And Erickson.
Present.
And if you could also call the roll for the City Council, please.
Carter.
Present.
Coulter.
Present.
DeLisandro.
Present.
Lowman. Martin. Nelson. Bussi.
Present. So we have four of the seven council members here, so we do have a quorum of the City Council this evening. So we have a, a couple of items on the agenda. Number, number two on the agenda is approval of minutes. If council has had a chance to look it over, I would look for approval from the City Council side of the minutes of the March 9th, 2022 Concurrent City Council Port Authority Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Carter to approve the City Council version of the minutes from March 9th, 2022. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for zero.
And I would entertain a similar motion then for the Port Authority on the same minutes.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made by Commissioner Bussi, seconded by Commissioner Carter. Any additions or corrections? I guess we need to call the roll on this one because we have Commissioner Keller.
Correct.
There. Bussi.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Luns. Erickson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Under item three, our new business, two items. The first one is item 3.1 is the South Loop Development Fund Overview. Shane.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, President, Commissioners, Councilmembers. I just have a short deck to present on the South Loop Development Fund, and I will share that here. Got this going on, okay? There, that's better. All right. So on an annual basis, we give the council and Port Authority an update on what's happening with the South Loop Development Fund. This is a capital projects fund, different than traditional city budgets or anything like that. The city has a number of capital projects funds, and this is one of them, and the process for approving expenditures and things like that is different than a budget, and for questions on the details of that, I would defer to Lori Economy or Jen Almquist, but we can get into that if folks want to. I think most people are interested in, A, the history of this fund and what the fund has been spending money on, and what it is projected to spend money on in the future, and I use that word projection again because it's not a, it's not a budget. But the city has a number of special taxes that are in place today. I've highlighted the ones that go to the city's general fund in green on this slide and blue for the South Loop Development Fund, and then there's another 2% of the city's lodging tax that goes to the BCVV. So just to go through these individually, the city collects a 7% lodging tax currently. 3% of that goes to the city's general fund, 2% of that goes to our convention and visitors' bureau, and 2% of that goes to the South Loop Development Fund. These are all authorized by statute through the years for various different reasons. On the liquor side, it's a citywide on sale liquor tax, which that 3% tax goes to the South Loop Development Fund. I've listed in here some pre-pandemic numbers so people can get a scale of what amounts we're talking about. And then on the admissions side, again, citywide admissions tax, but largely collected at Mall of America. That's a 3% tax that goes to the city general fund. And these are all instituted by legislation, and especially as it relates to the South Loop Development Fund, were originally set up to be the backstop for the debt for the mall parking ramps so that the city general property taxes had much less risk because of the hotel base that existed in Wilmington at that time when those, when those funds were sold. Through the years that the South Loop Development Fund legislation has been modified, particularly in 2008 and '10, to broaden the use of those funds further out in South Loop, but still today, those funds are dedicated to economic development activities in the South Loop District. So in the packet is a spreadsheet that contains a projection of what the fund would spend money on this year and the preceding years. A couple of these line items I left in there, even though they're outside of the dates on this table, just so that people have some visibility of the things that are projected out into the future. Just to go through this, in summary, I won't go through line by line for every particular expense or revenue. This is the revenue slide, so we get about $7.5 million in a normal year into the fund. The red text there is COVID, and so those are the COVID shortcomings that we are projecting out through the next five or six years before we get back to what we're hoping is, is normal lodging revenue, and I'll show the lodging graph here in a second, but other incomes that we have are assessment incomes, so those next two lines are assessments that were run through this fund in order to not bond for them. That is a couple of benefits. It reduces some of the banking metrics that the, our financial department sees and uses. It also gets some money into this fund because the assessment interest rate is higher than the investment interest rate due to the restrictions that the city and Port Authority have placed on, on their investments, which are basically extremely low risk. So you get a lot higher interest rate on, on that money, and it is extremely secure because it's property tax revenue that property taxpayers have to pay. There's a bit of interest income relatively insignificant, not that 150 grand is insignificant, but when you talk about a $7.5 million fund or a $20 million balance, it just goes to show how conservative we are when we invest the money, which is, which is fine. And then the other revenues there, the fund has paid for certain parcel acquisitions in the past, Alpha Five, which is part of the SIC development, same thing with Interstate Diesel. The fund paid for that, and so we project when those pieces are sold, those monies will come back in, and some of those pieces coming back in come from other funding sources like the Mall of America, TIF Administration and Reserve Fund in order to make this fund whole. Due to the rules on how you can and can't spend the money in this fund, do you, you know, I'm just, I'm going to leave it at that. It's a kind of a complicated legal item, and the point is, is that this one gets refilled not only with the sale of property revenue, but through some other revenue sources like TIF that can be used for it in order to make sure that we are following all the rules as it relates to the expenditures and revenues in, in this fund. This is the projection that we have for the liquor and lodging revenue through COVID and out into the future. 2019 is shown there as the base year, about $7.5 million, like I said. 2020 was, of course, pretty terrible. 21 was a bit better, and we're projecting that, you know, in the moderate recovery, 2022 is going to be decent. We're going to get 65 or 70% of the normal revenue in 2022, we think. We think COVID is hopefully on the way out. I say that sitting here with COVID, so it's a little bit funny to say that, but, but it's, it's just something that, you know, we've tried to put bookends on with what we call the long slow recovery or the moderate recovery, and the actual recovery since we first started doing these projections in April of 2020, I mean, I've kind of bounced in between these two bookends throughout that time period, but this, this same exercise is done for the other portion of lodging tax, the 3%, as well as the admission tax, which goes to the general fund, which is, of course, affects the levy, whereas this fund affects our ability to do projects. That other piece is a direct correlation to what the property tax levy will be in the future. And then on the expenses side, these are categorized, and there's a summary of this in the packet and information as well. Transfers out, currently we're, we're spending about $2 million a year on police operations. That's split up into two lines because the first line there had been the traditional outlay for South Loop Police Operations, and then after the 2015 Al Shabab video, there was an uptick that was supposed to be for five years and expire, if you will, in 2020, but the pandemic was there and crime was up in South Loop, and so the decision was made to extend that, and right now, that, that, those expenses are projected in the fund to continue out into the future, as you can see. When, you know, Lori and I and other staff, you know, project out for this fund, we typically do, I don't want to say worst case scenario, but we all, we try to budget conservatively, conservatively, so that, so we're in usually a lot better shape in the future than, than, than we would project. Again, this isn't a budget, it's a projection. Yeah, creative placemaking in there as well. The interest on this fund also funds Port Authority general fund operations, like DAF, that's a budget adjustment that the Port Authority did earlier tonight. And then we split up the projects into active projects that we're spending money on currently, and then future projects. I know one of them shows up as a, as a current project or current expense in the future project, but that's a little bit of an anomaly. You've got a lot of infrastructure improvements in, in this category, and so these are things that we're currently not assessing developments for in the South Loop District because we've, you know, had the goal for a long time of promoting development itself, and to add cost to developments is not what the city and Port Authority have thought is the best use of the funds. This fund is set up to do economic development, and we're doing that through the reducing the cost of development, to promote housing, other things that we're trying to do in the district. The SIC project has a, has a big chunk of money projected to come out of this, and you can see the other really big expense is the trunk highway 77, 494, collector distributor access in and out. That's projected at, you know, a 13-ish million dollar project out here in a couple of years, and we'll have a really important decision to make as a city and a Port Authority as to whether or not that expense is, is truly necessary. Now, at this point, we think it is. It's in all the traffic modeling and whatnot. That's a really big number and has a big effect on the, on the fund and cash balance here. And so we have it in there currently today. It's been in the CIP for a long time, and we assume that it's going to, you know, need to happen, but we'll continue to analyze the traffic projections on development and things like that to make sure that we truly do want to, do expend that, that large sum of money. And then again, I have some things grayed out that are, that are off the graph. I left them on for this year just so that folks have visibility into what expenses are going to be looking out into the future. And then two other categories of expenses, professional services and maintenance. So professional services has legislative services, has some miscellaneous expenses for expo coming out of this fund so that it doesn't hit the, the city general fund, and then we do property information services. So these are things that allow us extra visibility into mortgages. They were extremely helpful during the pandemic as we tried to understand what's happening, excuse me, with certain properties like Mall of America and others, so Green Street and TRP. Some of that was subsidized by Care's through some of the, the COVID stimulus money, but now going on into the future, and it's a really helpful tool to help us analyze what's happening with the commercial and residential properties in the district. And then maintenance activities, and so these are things that help with economic development by maintaining things in a way that promote development. There are a lot of things that I won't, again, won't go through all the nitty gritty, those things, some street line, excuse me, street sign replacement, all the electronic signs that were paid for initially out of this fund or assessed, need to be maintained, various street sweep, street sweeping and things like that. And then we get a fund balance and a cash balance, which are different depending on our assets and liabilities, and then we do have a cash balance net of the required reserve. That bottom line is really the number that, the only number that I really look at, and it's not the only number, but it's the most important number on, on, on the sheet because that's really how much money we have to spend without, you know, considering the projects that are, that are already above the line, if you will. The required reserve is a $1.5 million flag on the fund that we put up as a debt backstop for the Indigo Project. That does burn off in 2028, I believe, and so that, that will go away ultimately, and we haven't had to, to use that reserve, but it lowered the borrowing in order to invest and make that marquee, and I call it marquee because it was really the first residential project that kicked off what is a, a mini residential boom happening in South Loop, and would be a lot more blooming if commodity and labor prices would come back down. But that's a, that's a quick summary of the South Loop Development Fund. I know I went through that pretty, pretty quickly, but be happy to take questions if there are any.
Council, any questions?
Port Authority questions?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. If we could go back to that last slide that we had. So in 2027 projected, there says total expenditures of 15 million, but my quick math of the stuff above it doesn't add up to that, so just if you could clarify where that's, okay, so that, that's the large Thunderbird, that's the access project, the 13 million. Am I understanding that correctly?
I believe that's the case. Shane?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson. So yeah, this, this total expenditures adds up both of these sheets, if you will, including the transfers out, active projects, future projects, professional services and maintenance. So the, the big number there, 15, is in large part due to the, you know, the 10.6 million you see here from the previous sheet under the trunk highway 77 project.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. And then in the, I think the revenue, why are we projecting 2022 to have lower revenue than 21? I think it was, I didn't jot it down.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, are you looking at this sheet?
That sheet right there, yeah. So 21 is, yeah, 4.7, and 22 is 4.4.
So this, this top table is our long recovery? So this, this assumes that something bad happens to the economy or COVID? And this is the number, these are the numbers that we're currently using and that Kari is using in budget projections. There's another part of the spreadsheet that has the city's general fund, so this is the 3% of lodging tax and the admissions tax that goes to the general fund, and so she's using the moderate recovery table currently, and we are also using the moderate recovery table numbers here that translate over into the revenue for the South Loop. So these numbers, like the 1.790166, comes from right, whoops, excuse me, sorry, comes from right here on the moderate recovery projection. So I showed you the long slow recovery, just for scale, but the moderate recovery are the numbers that we're currently projecting.
Okay, sounds good. And then, um, that was all the questions I had, so thank you, Shane. Appreciate it.
Sure. You bet.
Commissioner Hunt?
Shane, I had a question, and assuming it's keeping with the more moderate recovery projection and conservative stance, so you've not altered projections to incorporate what might be if, if you were to take what the malls projecting for hotel and what y'all have talked about for hotel. You've not included that any in, in here. I mean, I can see an improvement presumably by lessening of COVID, but there's nothing that you've overlaid in here yet for what could come from the water park, correct?
Mr. President, Commissioners and Commissioner Hunt, that, that's right. So earlier tonight, the Port Authority heard an update about the potential for hotel conversions, which, you know, at the Crown Plaza will take out a couple of hundred rooms. Another 150 plus or minus rooms will come online with, when the Hyatt House opens theoretically this year. They started construction and, and, you know, in February of 2020, have been building ever since, so that's going to maybe fill that bucket back up. If there are hotels that are, are converted or taken down, which we hear rumors about from time to time, that supply will come out the market, and then, of course, if the water park comes along and builds, you know, four, 800 rooms, that will fill up the bucket again. But we see, you know, the, the city has about 9,500 hotel rooms, sitting here today over 47 hotels, and a, a couple of hundred rooms don't really move the needle a lot. You know, when we did see, you know, the JW Marriott and the Radisson Blue get built over that period, there was, you could kind of see an uptick, but really the numbers from year to year really have a lot more to do with what events are coming to town, like the Super Bowl year had a, you know, a big uptick because the room rates were so high that year, you know, Republican National Convention, Final Four, et cetera. I mean, there's just a lot of variability in there, and so we don't get into that super granularity because it's, it's just, it's hard to predict, number one, and it just all gets kind of, kind of muted. 2019 was definitely the high watermark year for hotel revenue. It's the biggest year that we've ever seen, so we do have kind of a, a high base to look at, but, you know, it is, it is the base that we have. If we looked at, you know, 2018, you could make arguments that that is a, you know, a good or a bad year and so on down the line. And so, and that's a long answer to your question, but the simple answer is no, we are not projecting an uptick due to the water park. That may come, but it's also somewhat likely that, that you're going to have some other hotels either get converted or maybe torn down and redeveloped for not, you know, non-hotel uses.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, Shane. So I see for this year, for 2022, approximately 5.9 million in projected revenue and approximately 7.8 million in projected expenses. Those numbers are through the end of the year. I, am I correct in that? And so where, where approximately, we're roughly a quarter and a half into the year, where are we in terms of, of overall revenue and expenditures, and then how do those numbers track with historically where this fund has been?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and Councilmember Coulter, and so a number of these expenses are, fixed is the wrong word, but, you know, we feel like we have a pretty good handle on what revenue is going to look like this year. Of course, COVID can change that, the economy can change that. The transfers are relatively stable. The biggest ones are, of course, police, and those are, those are fairly set. The creative placemaking one is, is fairly set. These others really depend on bid openings, and I think even like very soon, we're going to see a bid opening on this sanitary sewer project, which is related to this, the street project right above it, and that's 4.0, you know, $3 million. So to call it the 2.9 is, you know, going to be basically that number. We think we know where the revenue is going to sit. We're now into April, but of course, that can obviously change, and then the rest of these are, you know, I'm really curious to see how construction bids come in, given what else we've been seeing in, you know, on the private side of the market, and hopefully things aren't too crazy. And then the rest of these, you know, while notable, they're not huge and they won't move around that much, and so barring the, I think the biggest question mark is, you know, what the bid openings bring for these large expenditures that we have, you know, 4.3 million dollars in expenses. If those bids come in really high, you could see another, I don't know, you know, anybody knows?
So, excuse me, so the, the short answer there is it sounds like, you know, outside of sort of the unknowns related to some of those bigger bids that, that things are basically sort of on track and fairly predictable. Is that correct?
I'd say that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And to the other side of Councilmember Coulter's questions, from a revenue standpoint, are we, is it tracking, are we a quarter of the way into the budget or the projected revenue since we're a quarter of the way into the year?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, the, the 2022 numbers are actually doing a little bit better than our projections right now, currently, and this is where a lot of the money is made in the hotel world. The spring break is a really, you know, big time. The early part of the year didn't do as well, so we were still, you know, in January and part of February, still the Omicron surge was, was happening and the revenues were lower, but those are lower months. And so I'd say right now, we're a bit ahead of schedule. We'll be transitioning now to meeting monthly, look at all those numbers and readjust our, our projections for the year. Let's say we're on track, maybe trending just a little bit higher. The spring break peak wasn't quite as high as I was hoping it was going to be now that we're kind of nearing the end of spring break. We just got the numbers. We get them every Wednesday, but no, no big surprises, more or less on track, maybe a couple of points higher.
Thank you.
Well, I, I think what we get into is we're in kind of an uncertain period, and let's hope that inflation numbers, you know, stabilize and, and go down. Obviously, if they don't, we've been seeing a lot of construction costs have really been running rapidly or much in, in advance of any general inflation, but you could, since these are revenue based numbers to the extent that in the outer years, the hotels start to move their pricing up, obviously, then this moves up too, but, but it's, it's a difficult balancing act. I just wanted to comment on something, it's probably a little nerdy, but having, having had a lot of discussions with Shane in particular over the last couple of years, why it's so important to have these property information services from TRP and, and Green Street. Getting this data really enabled us as we went through this very difficult time to, to have a much better handle on what was going on, and I can say it's equally important even if everything is going well because then you can rest, you're, you're comfortable in, in the fact that it is going well. So I think some of these things look kind of mundane, but if, if we don't have good information, then it's really hard to plan and, and deal. So again, I think that's important.
And I would agree. It, especially during the pandemic, to have that information, you know, knowledge is power, and there was, there was a lot of power in the information that we were able to glean from that. Council, additional questions?
Any additional Port questions?
And we know full well, as you, if you dig through the numbers, if you have additional questions, you know how to get Shane, and he'll be happy to, to talk through anything additional because it's a, it's a lot of numbers and there's a lot of moving parts. It's, it takes at least a couple of times through, I think, to understand it fully, and I know Shane would be more than happy to go through at least one more time if need be, so. Anything else on item 3.1? If not, let's move to item 3.2, which is the Expo 2027 Update and Funding Allocation. Shane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. President and Port Authority members. So tonight, we have John Stanek online, just got put up on screen. So John, I'll let you state your full title, because otherwise I might misstate it, but we want to do tonight is a couple of things. Just get John in front of the Council and Port Authority to give us an update on what's happening on the private nonprofit side of the Expo effort. I believe he's fresh back from a flight across the pond related to the same project. Then we do have an action item to allocate some money out of the Saltsup Development Fund for expenses related to Expo, relatively small number for miscellaneous expenses, I'll call them, there'll be some travel related to that, and we have an inquiry mission coming up at some point this summer, late summer, where we might have some miscellaneous expenses, room rental and things like that, and so we just allocate that money out of the Saltsup Development Fund, create a budget, not a budget, not a budget, create a line item for those expenses, and so that's the request tonight. Formally, with that, I'll stop talking and hand it over to John and give us an update. Thanks, John.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Port Authority members, it's nice to be with you this evening. By way of introduction, I'm John Stanek. I'm the President and CEO of the Minnesota USA Expo 2027 Board. We are a 501(c)(6) organization. The mayor and Jamie serve on the board as well. So we are the entity that is, has made the bid on behalf of Minnesota and the United States of America, which is being considered by the Bureau of International Expositions. That's the international credentialing agency made up from countries from across the globe. So we are bidding for an Expo in 2027. As Shane said, I'm literally just back from Paris. There was a meeting at the BIE, there are four other countries competing in the same cycle that the United States is for a specialized Expo, and we were all brought, with three representatives from each country, to Paris this week to talk about upcoming events that Shane alluded to. So literally, some of the information I have to share with you is hot off the presses and hasn't even been shared with our board yet, so we will, we have a board meeting coming up this next week. But by way of background, we are seeking to host a specialized exposition in the summer of 2027 around the theme of healthy people, healthy planet. Our competitors are Phuket, Thailand, with the theme of future of life, living in harmony, sharing prosperity. Belgrade, Serbia, around the theme of play for humanity, sports and music for all. Malaga, Spain, around the theme of the urban era toward the sustainable city. And Argentina, around the theme of nature plus technology equals sustainable energy, a viable future for humanity. So those are our competitors. Just by way of background, some of the things we've done to lead up to this, we indicated our intention of candidature. The mayor and I were on a presentation in December of the BIE that was held virtually because of the Omicron outbreak. That presentation, which was done virtually to the delegates, included U.S. Secretary of State Tony Blinken. We had another senior official from the State Department, Governor Walz, Lieutenant Governor Flanagan, and the CEO of the Betty Ford Hazleton Foundation, and we received good feedback at the time and got some additional feedback just now that we were very professionally presented. Our theme is one that has resonated, and there's a lot of excitement, I think, to hear more from us. So in terms of where this is going, a decision will be made in June of '23, June of next year, on which country will be selected to host the 2027 Specialized Expo. We have a number of key events coming up between now and the end of the year that will really drive and establish our ability to be successful in this regard. One is, we are required to file a dossier, which is basically our bid presentation by June 7th. There's a number of items that we have to address in the dossier, and we're very actively working on that now to get it filed before June 7th. After the submissions are in from all the countries, the BIE will gather again in Paris for a general assembly of all the countries on June 20th and 21st, and the countries that are bidding will make a 30-minute presentation. Also, each country is required to host a reception for all countries and delegates, and we, through the luck of the draw, were selected to have our reception on June 19th, which is the night before the general assembly starts. So dossier preparation for June 7th, a very important presentation of the BIE that will take place at the general assembly in June 20th and 21st. We will be on the 21st, I believe, or later in the day, the 20th. We have the opportunity to go last with our presentation. And then Shane mentioned the inquiry mission, so the BIE, a number, a few of the countries are chosen, the member countries, along with the BIE staff, they visit each country that has made a bid, and they basically go through your presentation and your bid and ask a bunch of questions to make sure it's viable. There's experience with the Minnesota group from the last time we bid for a World Expo, and we're ramping it up even further this time. The inquiry mission that will come to Minnesota, it will come to both Minnesota to look at the site in Bloomington and meet with local officials and our board, and there will also be a, they will stop in Washington, D.C. to meet with members of the State Department, Department of Commerce, and other elected and other officials in D.C. The inquiry mission will be coming to Minnesota and D.C. tentatively somewhere in the framework of October 8th through the 14th. So we will be very late in the game because there's another general assembly then, November 28th and 29th in Paris, right after Thanksgiving, where the BIE staff will give their report on all of the countries and whether they pass muster to continue to be viable, that you then go on to the campaign to be chosen for June 23rd. So some key upcoming updates are the dossier submission on June 7th, a reception on June 19th in Paris, general assembly where we make a presentation June 20th and 21st, inquiry mission to Minnesota and Washington, D.C., somewhere in the timeframe of October 8th to 14th, and then a general assembly at the end of the year. After that, there will be a lot of lobbying by the various countries of the delegates coming up on that vote in June of 2023. Couple items that I just want to mention very quickly, and then I'd be happy to stand or respond to any questions. One is, it was true last time, but I think, you know, the mayor and Jamie and Shane can speak to this, we have really developed an even deeper tie with the U.S. State Department and the State, United States government on this. At the BIE meeting this week, we were accompanied Ted Johnson, who's a senior advisor to our local effort, Jim Core, who's actually the United States' delegate to the BIE from the Department of State, was present with us. We've had a number of meetings with the State Department, both about assisting us with items of the dossier, the bid presentation, preparing for the inquiry mission, and most importantly, when all of these bids are in and the presentations have been made, they will activate our ambassadors in each member country of the BIE to speak on behalf and seek support for the United States Minnesota Bloomington bid. The second thing is, we've, the same is true of the U.S. Department of Commerce, and one of the areas that we are deepening the presentation from the last bid is we will have an even deeper involvement of the U.S. Department of Commerce around trade. We know that from listening to the BIE countries, one very valuable thing to them besides the theme is the ability to establish trade relationships, and of course, that's a bilateral interest. So we anticipate the Department of Commerce being even more heavily involved than they were last time, which is incentive for countries to participate, and it's also a huge benefit to Bloomington, the region, the state of Minnesota, the United States, from having companies interested in trading with us or doing business here. So a lot of work between now and the end of June, for sure. We'll have a little bit of a breather before the inquiry mission comes in the fall to continue to refine and work on the bid. You know, major components of it are the site, what's gonna go on in the site, how is this gonna be a development that will lead to a legacy? There's a lot of excitement about our theme of healthy people, healthy planet, and wellness. I think of all the themes that I mentioned, we have one that we really feel resonates with this time, it was chosen before the pandemic, but it even has more interest in viability now, so, you know, it's impossible to know for sure how this is gonna go, but I think we've assembled a great board. We have a wonderful working relationship with Bloomington Port Authority, the city of Bloomington, our state and local partners and our federal partners, and it really feels like we've got a lot of people, good people, working on this to bring what could be a very exciting event for Bloomington, our region, our state, and our country. So with that, that's a brief overview, I probably went on longer than you wanted. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you, John, thanks for the update, and good to have you back, and I hope you were received well in Paris, and I'm sure you will, I'm sure you were, I'm sure that they were impressed with what has been accomplished on the Minnesota and the United States bid and what we've got in the offing, and I know they are because of the work that has gone into it so far. Council, questions? Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if we could get an update on the legislation that needs to get through Congress, I believe, to help us out on some of this? If there's any update on that, I'd love to hear about it, thank you.
Yeah. I address, Jamie or Shane, do you want to address that, or you want me to take that?
No, go ahead, John.
Okay, so there's a couple of components of this. One is, there is some funding that was made available for the Osaka exposition, which is coming up in 2025. Just a little bit of background on this, the United States had dropped out of the BIE for several years, so having an expo, having a fair, a world fair, if you will, was not even an option for the United States. As we re-engaged in connection with the last bid from the United States perspective, there was also this gap in terms of will the federal government support expos in other countries? And there has been an appropriation that was assisted, and I think Jamie and Shane can speak to this, by members of our Minnesota congressional delegation are very helpful in this, to establish some money for the Osaka pavilion. In terms of the other additional funding that we'd be looking at long term, there's two phases to this. We've currently got a bid committee that's seeking to get the authorization to hold an expo in 2027. If we're successful in doing that, we will establish a host committee. If you think about the Super Bowl, there's get the bid and then an entity that actually makes it happen. And we do contemplate in connection with that, if we are the successful bidder, there will be discussions about both federal and state resources to assist with the expo.
Is that helpful, Councilmember?
Yes, I was just, I think there was one other piece of it just related to maybe that funding. I think that funding was, was there not a piece of legislation that kind of got in the way of us actually like building, or like there was a planning piece and then there was a building piece, and I thought the planning piece we were good with, but the building piece we needed to help with at the congressional level. Am I correct on that?
You are, and I think we refer to that as the handcuffs legislation, and...
And I know that we talked to...
Amy?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Commissionmembers, Congressman Phillips and his office are working on the language to remove the handcuffs, as it were, and what that does is prohibits the United States from constructing or operating an expo. So that's a second piece that they're also working on, so.
And it's not a resolution yet, but it's something that we talk about every time we're with the congressional delegation in any way, shape, or form, reminding them of the importance of this, because it is that two-step process to make sure that we are participating again, we are in Osaka, the United States is in Osaka, but then if we should happen to land the expo, we've got to make sure that we're, we have the legislation placed that we can do it, we can actually do it.
And maybe John can correct me on this, but the way that they were able to get the first tranche authorized, Senator Klobuchar, and through the house, the 20 million, is that that's largely going towards planning activity, which is not restricted, it's the actual construction and operation that is, so presumably that prohibition would need to be lifted to get those next tranches. Is that about right, John?
And our, yes, and our congressional delegation is working very hard on this issue to give that kind of flexibility that we will need going forward to not only re-engage with the international community by assisting with presence in Osaka, but also looking at what can be done to assist us in hosting the expo in the United States in 2027.
Does that timeline impact the dossier deliverable, or is that something that can go beyond that?
It can go beyond, and I'm sorry for the protocols, I can't see all of your...
No problem, this is Councilmember Delisandro, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember, no, the dossier, we did a, we did a visit to Dubai Expo, and Jamie and Shane, the mayor, are veterans of having gone through this once before, but dossier is really, we need to make sure we're covering the essentials, that we have a site, that we have a plan, that we have a theme, that we have an idea about how we're gonna do this. But we can make refinements in the dossier between June and the inquiry mission coming in October, and even going up to the vote in June. So this is going to be on multiple fronts, a little bit of a work in progress throughout. What we have to make sure that we accomplish in the dossier is meeting all of the minimum requirements, and of course, being good Minnesotans, we want to do better than meet the minimum requirement. We want to have a good proposal that we put forward, but it's our intent to continue to work all these issues. So I think when it comes to things like the legacy piece, site development, what kind of businesses could potentially come in, how do we want to construct and configure the expo site, what other community benefits can we provide? That's an ongoing discussion that we will continue to build on and have more information for the BIE staff and the other countries that come during the inquiry mission. And I would anticipate, also in response to your question, that during the D.C. part of that trip, the members of our congressional delegation will have something to add on those very points.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And if it would be helpful, Councilmember, I think I have in my office, I know we have them lying around here somewhere, the dossier that was prepared for the last bid, but it might be helpful to understand exactly, I mean, it's literally a three-ring binder, that thick, of information and basically covering all the points that John talked about.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Commissioners, some additional information, you know, John's team has been busy with fundraising, and some late-breaking news is that yesterday Hennepin County moved through committee unanimously, motion to contribute $250,000 towards the dossier preparation, so that will actually go to the county board next week on their consent agenda. So that's a much appreciated and strong message of support from the county for this effort.
Right, and I just add that on the fundraising front, we have a lot of front-end loaded activities here, there's a lot of activity related to the dossier prep to these receptions and so on, preparing for the inquiry mission, so we have a number of costs that are really upfront. If you look at this as a project that'll go to June of '23, it's not gonna do us a lot of good to raise money in the last 60 days. So we're making good progress. I think we're currently, our budget approved by our board is about $2.7 million to support this bid. I think we're, we just went over $700,000 or so, and we have a couple other verbal commitments that will get us into the neighborhood of the million-dollar range, so that's a nice down payment toward what we need to raise. And we have a team of advisors that are working on that every day. We've had great support from local companies, and we continue to have those discussions, those are ongoing, as well as we're now branching out now that the Dubai Expo is over. There are a number of major sponsors of the Dubai Expo that are actually U.S. companies, so we're gonna broaden our fundraising appeal beyond Minnesota and the local community and national companies as well.
And I would add, from a timeline perspective, the inquiry mission that John mentioned, get it on your calendars now, because there will be, there will be plenty of meetings, there will be visits to the site, there will be, you know, eyeballs on things, but there are all some very important receptions where the expectation that local elected officials will be there to greet and to talk to and explain to members of the BIE, and it is very important, so we'll be sure to highlight those and get it on everybody's calendar because this, as many folks as we can get there, the better, so.
And we should be able to lock in on those dates, Mr. Mayor, within the next week or so. It was literally kind of a draft yesterday, we were drawing country names out of hats to determine who had to pick in what order, and so there was a little rearranging and some options created. We grabbed that date because, you know, fall is beautiful in Minnesota, but more importantly, and to the Councilmember's earlier question, that gives us additional time to continue to refine the dossier and to really work on our presentation when they come through Minnesota and D.C. So that was the date we chose, but that should be firmed up in the next week, and when it is, we'll certainly get that in from, I'm anticipating we'll maybe even have that by our board meeting next Wednesday, so.
Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Hunt, any questions? Council, any additional questions? All right. Thank you, John, appreciate the information. Appreciate the information, appreciate the update.
You bet. Thank you all for your time and thanks for the support, and let's go win this thing, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, see y'all later.
So long. So counsel, additional questions or discussions? I think what's before us tonight is, uh, a, a motion, uh, considering the allocation of up to twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars from the South Loop Development Fund for Expo-related expenses. And it's, uh, uh, the fund that, uh, we just talked about earlier, the, the South Loop Development Fund, and twenty-five thousand dollars. And this would be specifically for the bid-related expenses, I think. If, if I'm not wrong, Shane, is that correct? This is, um, yes, thank you very much. So if you, if you break down in your mind, uh, there, there's the bid effort, and then if and when the bid is won, then it becomes the actual, the actual expo effort, which will dwarf the bid effort in, in terms of scale and work and, and everything that's going to be, need to be done. So, uh, that's what this, the, the ask is tonight for twenty-five thousand dollars for the South Loop Development Fund to help with the bid effort through, uh, for the, for the expo effort. Any questions on that? If there's no questions, uh, counsel, I would look for a motion, and this is a, this is just a council, you know, council vote. I look for a motion to allocate up to twenty-five thousand dollars from the South Loop Development Fund for Expo-related expenses. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarifying point, uh, so the twenty, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, would that be going to the committee, or would we be, that would stay internal and it would just be for staff to use on any expense?
Correct. Mr. Brugge?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, it's supportive of, um, staff work and activities that are related to supporting the bid, um, process.
Okay, perfect. Um, so I'm happy to make the motion.
A motion by councilmember Carter? And a second by councilmember Delisandro? Counsel, any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Very good. I think that ends our official business. Uh, any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none? Uh, we are, I'm going to, we are adjourned. And, and I will adjourn the council, or the, the council portion, and, uh, as vice president of the port, I'll adjourn the port as well. So, thank you all for being here.